Today is May thirteenth, 2025. I'd like to call to me in your order. If I could have you join me for the budget meeting, please. The project we need to apply in the United States of America and for the public, for which it stands, we wish under God indivisible, reporting and justice for all. First item up tonight on tonight's agenda is our budget hearing. I will turn the floor over to Ms. Leone for our budget hearing presentation.
Awesome. Thank you. Actually, Mr. Bessetta is going to start, and then I will jump in behind him.
All right. Actually, I'll move over. Good evening. Good to see everybody. It's hard to believe that we're already at budget hearing time, but the year is going fast. But we look forward to hitting some of the highlights. Some of the things that we're going to talk about tonight are things we've been talking about all along. Some things are newer developments, as you know. And I know Tracy's going to be talking about this as well. A little bit of an unusual year, especially because we had a run of years that we get pretty much on-time budgets. So that part of the equation was known. And if it's on time, that means we know really by April first, you know, what our aid allocation is for the year. For example, this year, it just was finalized literally a few days ago. So that was a wild card that, you know, made things a little more difficult. So the last time we've talked, we do have updated information since the last meeting that we had. So we'll dive into this. We'll always start, and for years we've done this, we'll always start our presentations by saying, this isn't just about doing the math and putting together account codes and budget lines, right? This is about how do we balance the needs of our students and provide good opportunities for our students and still be respectful to the taxpayers. That's always, that's always the biggest challenge. Okay, you could double the budget and have a million other things that potentially could be accessible. So what is practical? What is defendable? And that's always where we try to land, in a good spot. The process is a continuing process while we're publicly talking a lot more about it over the last couple of months. Really, it's a year-round process, just different stages and phases of same conversations. In order to be able to put together a responsible budget, you have to do that. It can't be something that you put together once the state budget comes out, you have a couple of weeks to put together. So we're constantly, for example, looking at when we're looking at programs, what is the need and the interest in the programs that we offer? We're pleased to say that the programs that are well-attended or supported, those things will run. We're not cutting, and it really what emphasizes, nothing is being cut where there had been adequate participation. Same thing for our classes. We'd love to be able to offer, you know, endless amounts of classes, but it's not feasible or practical or going back to that first slide, responsible to our taxpayers to say, yeah, we're going to have a class, but there's going to be one or two kids in that class. So having said that, there are some examples that we'll talk about of how can we be more creative and flexible so the kids still get personalized experiences and we're still financially responsible in how we have that happen. So the process is continuous. It's a continuous review of programmatic changes, state requirements, things that the state sometimes imposes on districts as it has done again in the most recent round of their budget. So our process, because our budget reflects everything that we do, from our core academic program, right? There are things that we have to, every school has to do certain things. And then there are places where we have some choice. We have some ability to differentiate or say this is a priority or that's a priority. For example, one of the things in the last few years that has become a priority is to support students in a more broad sense, not just about what happens in the classroom, but how do we support through additional guidance or mental health resources so that students, when they come into the classroom, are more prepared to do well? And so our track record has been, you can see that we've increased, for example, our staffing in some of those areas where the, in terms of like guidance counseling services or our mental health onsite clinic that was new this year. So that's sort of where we've invested, thinking that we're going to have more prepared students and better positioned to learn. So that only happens by having continuous conversations, both internally and externally. So we have multiple layers of interaction, meetings from grade levels, departments in each of the buildings. That's an ongoing conversation. Those conversations are reflected in discussions that staff members, for example, have with their principals or directors. And that goes on throughout the year. We also have a number of district-level committees. So we have had one just a little while ago. We had our advisory cabinet meeting where we talk about things that broadly impact the district K-12. So we have a number of mechanisms to make sure that those things that we talk about and say are priorities or concerns or things that need to be addressed, there's a way in which or vehicle for those to be addressed and eventually reflected in our budget. And this one is a big one for us this year, our strategic planning initiative, because there are a number of people in the room who participate in that process. We've had two meetings already. Certainly, there are a lot of things that have been talked about at those meetings that are going to be reflected in this budget and probably in subsequent budgets, okay? But that is helpful in that we've asked for broad participation from the Canistoto school community. What is important? Just asked a few days ago, again, put out another layer to have interaction through a survey, which we hope people will participate in so that we can, when we go back to our next strategic planning meeting next Thursday, our conversation will be informed by some of those thoughts and reactions and opinions that people have. So lots of layers to the process. And again, a lot of these things, we've talked about a lot, I'm not going to reek these things to you. But our core instruction program, our curriculum has got to be a priority. And so in some cases, we've had to invest this past year, for example, we had to invest in materials to support our social studies curriculum because we, through these different conversations we've had, identified that is an area where we didn't have coordination from grade to greater building to building. We've done that with our ELA program and math programs previously. So to be able to deliver the type of quality instruction, consistent, research-based instruction, we have to invest in the materials to reflect that. And so there's more to come in that area and that we're still working in implementation of social studies. But science is an area that, like Mr. Lyer, he can attest to that. There's a lot of things that have happened in the world of science that need to be addressed and we need to invest in. So our curriculum is a huge priority. I already mentioned this, our commitment to, in sustaining in this budget, what we've committed to in last year's budget, which was a commitment to, to support community schools. Community schools not only benefits the student, it benefits the whole family, which makes it more likely that the student is going to come to school ready to learn and be in a good position. Look forward to our continued interaction with our, through our PAC group. And a lot of the ideas that we've invested in have come from, again, from that group. Already mentioned our satellite mental health office. We're looking forward to having a second year under that very, that was a program that has been tremendously well-received and been a great investment. And over the years, we have, over the last several years, have increased by a couple of counselor positions in the district. Priority was how do we maintain that? As everyone knows, we've stepped away from the federal funds, for example, that were in the COVID era. So part of a strategic planning process was to say, how can we still continue to support some of the things that initially might have been brought in when funding was a little bigger or broader or certainly on the federal side was? So we've committed to being able to maintain that level of guidance support in the district. You also know, or many of you know, we, in partnership with Madison County, we now have two school patrol officers very visible all around the buildings. You'll have heads nodding, you see them all the time. At any point during a meeting, they're going to check it out. That's what we want. We want them to be very engaged and active throughout the building. That was a good financial investment because we leveraged the partnership with Madison County Sheriff's Office. And so it was a cost-effective strategy for us to actually increase our actual access to, I guess, the safety support. And again, we already mentioned some of these things and what we've invested in. We need to make sure that we're supporting the core academic program. We've expanded in a number of ways our career and technical education programs, and that is a couple of forms. We host some here, but we also have a lot of our students who go to Bosse's who've had great success in Bosse's for technical programs as well. So this budget continues there. We had talked a lot about the challenges in school. When the kids come to school, they want to have a calm, peaceful environment that's conducive to learning. So part of the commitment moving forward and looking at just a variety of changing factors that impact schools, where the budget reflects the addition of an assistant principal, so a person who's going to be on the floor working directly with teachers and students so that we can immediately and effectively address, whether it's behavior concerns or corresponding with parents or addressing, just addressing things that come up in the course of the day when you have hundreds of people together in the room and hundreds of other people outside of the room who are attached in some way to what's going on. We've also, on the other side of the checklist there, early learning, the budget reflects. We clarified this in earlier meetings, but just to be perfectly clear, the budget calls for the sustaining of the partnership with both Madison and at Bosse's for our pre-K early learning services. There is no variation in as far as what we've, what we've, you know, designated is effective or acceptable class size. We'll have the number of sections consistent, number of kids and sections consistent with what our practice has been. Really focusing on intervention and being as pinpointed as possible. So to support the core academic program, we also need to be able to work individually or in smaller groups with students who need additional support. And so this budget still is committed to that process. Down towards the bottom, and you'll see some of these things, actually, if you stay around for the full meeting tonight, you'll see some examples of what we mean by this. But better than listening to me talk about it, it's good to hear some of our students talk about what some of these flexible career opportunities look like and what it means to them. So I won't talk a lot about that, but suffice it to say, we need to evolve. The world evolves around schools. We need to be flexible. We need to say, how else can we help support student learning outside of the traditional classroom environment where the teacher in front of the kids enrolls, right? Learning can look different. And so we've created a mechanism by which students can personalize their learning and then see where it intersects with what our local and regional business partners, community organizations say is needed or necessary for community sustainability. And again, we're fortunate when we look at the number of activities, whether it's co-curricular activities or athletics or music opportunities, we have a large number of kids who participate in our programs, especially when you look sometimes and you see what would a school, how many kids would a school of our size typically have involved? We're fortunate that we have a lot of kids who are involved. We want to continue to maintain that access to those things that get kids excited about learning. New offerings, I think we're always, again, looking when we do things like have a strategic planning session. That's an invitation for ideas to come in. If there's something that we're missing, something that we would benefit from, that's a good place to sort of plant a seed and then we can look to see if that's something that makes sense for the district. And then we will continue to invest in infrastructure. And if you've looked over the last several years, the building is looking quite a bit different. We had a pretty good facelift in the last couple of years. And then we're having a really big project that we're, is literally just starting. And we're going to be in it really for the next couple of years. So, but it's going to be really exciting to see if you keep looking at those pictures around the school of what our auditoriums and gyms and all that will look like. So it's exciting. Another part of it, though, the capital project is annually, we have districts that do something called the Capital Outlay Project. It's a hundred thousand dollar project that is built in annually into the budget, so it doesn't go to a referendum. It's part of this budget, right? So it's part of our proposed budget. And districts can each year do a hundred thousand dollar project, and then that keeps rolling every year. So they get the aid, the fountain here, and they keep, you want to keep that going. So it's important to us in this budget that we keep that going, that we continue to do those small. I call it, a hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot, but for a capital project, it's pretty small to keep that going. And then technology, as we know, so much of what we do now is based on technology. So continuing to maintain on a continuous cycle our camera replacements and technology replacements, just like buses and other things, we don't want everything to go at once. We need to have a lot, you know, spaced out so that we're logically replacing things that make sense. Bus replacement, to be clear, I know Tracy's going to talk about this as well, but in every conversation we've had with people, we've emphasized, to be clear, our proposal is for three buses, fifty-nine passenger bus and two sixty-five passenger bus, gas buses. They are not electric buses, want to be clear, because that is a sort of a big deal and we want people to know what they're voting on. The most recent budget that was just approved pushed back the implementation timeline of this electric bus mandate. So every district was supposed to, could only purchase the new types of buses starting in 2027. Now it's pushed back to 2029. So a little more breathing room to see how things settle in. Originally, every district was supposed to completely turn their fleet over by 2035. See, I like that eight where your window where you're having to completely turn your fleet over so you wouldn't have any of the traditional gas buses. So push back, so we'll see what happens. But we've been deliberate in not jumping in at that because we knew this was a distinct possibility. We knew that they were very costly initially, and we knew that for our purposes, they weren't very efficient when you look at. You know, these buses weren't necessarily intended for hilly areas, cold areas, sending out trips. We, as you know, we have a lot of students here who've been on long bus rides, right? When you go to, yeah, long bus rides when you go to play sports and get involved with events. So that is sort of pushed back. Okay.
All right.
Turn it over to Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. I'm going to start diving into the budget. I know that this is a riveting topic and everybody is going to be very focused and entertained, joking. So we'll start with the big picture. When I talk about budget, oftentimes we simply talk about or resonate the expense budget when we talk about the budget. But for a school district, we do need to look at the big picture. And over here on the side, I outline three different budgets because there really are three different budgets. There's the expense budget, right, that details out our expenditures. There's the revenue budget. We need to have a plan. We need to have a long-term plan for revenue. And then there's a savings budget called our reserve plan. That reserve plan comes to the Board of Education every June for review, and that is all of our reserves and our appropriated and unappropriated fund balance, which becomes part of our revenue. But tonight, we're going to talk about the expense budget. What is the expense budget? Why is it important and what happens with it? So our expense budget is a one-year plan. When we build out this budget, it's for one year only, right? So when we're talking about this, think about, think about your house budget or if you've started working, what are you doing with your money? And how do you, how do you, you know, put it in little buckets for things that you have to do, things that you want to do, and then some savings that you're going to start so that you have something for the long term, right? Expense budget, as Sean had outlined, what is in the budget academically? How is it supporting academics? How is it supporting our curriculum needs? Support the needs of students, staff, and the community, again, in this one-year term, but always looking into the future and what we want to build on. So while we're building a one-year budget, we're not just building it for today. We're building it for next year and the following year and the year after. We're building momentum. The expense budget, the important piece here or the unique piece here, this is the budget that voters, all of us that are voters, eighteen years or older, living in a school district for more than thirty days, vote on the expense budget, okay? So again, a little bit unique when we talk about budgets, but for my purposes, for the board's purposes, for the finance committee's purposes, we look at these three pieces in tandem when we look at the expense budget. So kind of start to dive in a little bit here and talk about twenty-five, twenty-six. What does it look like? Our expense budget for next year is thirty-nine million, six thirty-two, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, an increase of just under one point five million or three point nine three percent. So we're going to talk about that. And as we're talking about those expenses in the dollars, reflecting back at the academic pieces. I always like to start off and talk about when we're talking about a school budget. We are a service industry. We're not building widgets. We're not building bookshelves, right? We're a service industry. So the majority of our financing is spent towards services. I am required as part of the budget process and the public hearing, which is what we are in tonight, to present this in the three-part series. We're going to talk about the budget and the specific components, and then we're going to dive into some of the specific categories, okay? So we're going to look at this budget in the program, capital, and administrative components and talk a little bit about what those are. First, globally, we'll look at last year to this year. You can see along the left-hand side here, the left-hand side, the three components. The program component, the capital, and the administrative component gives the year-to-year expenditures in each of those components and the change. More importantly, we'll dive into each of those sections. But when we look at this as percentages, right? What percentage of our entire budget broken into these categories are applicable to each of these areas? Seventy-two point four percent of our budget supports program. Well, that's what we would expect to see. This is a school district or a service industry. That's what we would expect. Seventeen point one percent of the total budget supports capital and infrastructure. We'll dive into that a little bit further as we go through. And ten point five percent of the budget supports administrative and operations. So what is the program budget? The program budget is a whole series of categories, line items, and expenditures that are grouped together to get us our program number, inclusive of all of our regular education costs, our special education costs, alternative education, O C E D, technology, library, nursing, guidance, mental health services, athletics, co-curricular, Bosse's expenses, transportation. Sometimes this is a little unknown. People are, what do you mean transportation is program? It's a student-facing service. It's part of the program budget. Transportation and all of the related employee benefits. Those combined together total out our program portion of our expenditure, twenty-eight million, seven eleven, two oh one, or an increase of about three point six five percent. In our program budget, so a bit of a breakdown of that. In the program budget, we support eighty-five percent of our personnel in the program budget. So we can go line by line. We can take a look across. I'm going to point out just a few things here as they're up on the screen for us to walk through. So we have our first line is teaching, regular add, teaching our special areas, our special needs areas, media, computer, pupil services, athletic and co-curricular. As we look at the changes across the board, a couple of things I want to point out. One, I want to be clear that in the second line that says teaching special, we're not making reductions in that area. We have a couple of things that transpired. We have some expenditures that have been moved up to the top line. And we have some services that are not needed because they're not needed. Either we may have had a student or a group of students maybe age out or no longer be in a specific program. So we're meeting all of the needs and regulations, although it is showing a decrease in that line item. Again, down the side, there's a series of things that go into each one of these categories. Inter-fund transfers, I'm going to drop down to inter-fun, in-service and inter-fund transfers, two of them. I want to point something out here. In-service, again, we see a deduct. And while there is a deduct there in that line, we have shifted again some costs because one of the things that we will do every single time that we're looking at costs and looking at programs and looking at resources is if there's a way to generate or maximize aid on an expense, we'll do that. So in that in-service, it's inclusive, that line, when you look at all of the detail behind it, is inclusive of different things such as our textbooks and some of our curriculum work. Some of those costs have shifted and we can, moving forward, purchase some of those items that we are using through a coser, which means we can drive eighty percent back the next year. So we're not decreasing what we're using. We're just using it, we're spending it in a different way so we can generate some revenue, okay? Inter-fund transfer, we have an increase there in an inter-fund transfer. This is a line item where in our budget, we have historically had a two hundred thousand dollar line item that supports our early learning program. So these are our pre-K programs. We do get grant money, but the grant money does not cover the cost of the program. General fund supports two hundred thousand dollars in that program. It's moved into the special aid fund because that's where we make the expenses. That's where the grant comes in. And then there is an additional ninety thousand dollars in that inter-fund transfer line. That is specifically reflective to the general fund support starting next year for our food service program. While we are a C E P district, community eligibility program, meaning all of our students eat free regardless of income or any other eligibility, which is wonderful. We're in year two. It's a four-year approval, so we'll be moving into year three. With increased participation is increased food cost. So we obtain our reimbursement based on the number of students that come through, but it doesn't adjust or reflect changes and increases in either the increased staffing cost or increased food costs. And food costs, I'm not going to tell anybody sitting here what food costs have, you know, are looking at or have looked like over the last several months. Transportation, so again, this is where in the program budget where we account for all of our transportation costs. One of the moves that will be made in transportation this year is our buses. Regionally, all school districts in this region, Madison County, will move to GPS radios. So our buses do not have GPS radios. They're analog. And we have several areas that are dead zones, right? We know as we're driving, you might have a dead zone on your cell phone. So this does equip our buses with GPS radios. We actually, Canistoto is a pilot district. We actually, Canastoda was a pilot district. So we piloted two of our buses in some of our most difficult areas that have service. And while we were piloting them, we were spot on. We got service. We were able to connect to that bus. That bus was able to connect back to us. So this has been a long time in the works. So we're really excited that finally, on a regional basis, this has happened. But that is about a $45,000 increase in transportation that we don't normally see. Again, we'll be able to drive aid on it, but it comes back the following year. And then again, all of our employee benefits for all of our salaries in the program section are broken out. These are broken out through an allocation process. So there is a detailed calculation behind it. And it's allocated to each of these sections. So again, our program budget has increased about just over $1 million. Next, we will move into the capital section of the budget. So what is included in the capital section of the budget? This is all of our facilities, all of our operating pieces for maintenance. All of our facilities, grounds in and out of the building. Includes our staffing and employee benefits. There's some refund of taxes. That's where it goes if we had a refund of taxes that needed to be issued. It's recorded here. Debt service and capital outlays, like Mr. Bisano was talking about. And I'll just pause for a minute. Capital outlay and why it's important to us. A capital outlay, $100,000. The work can be done in one building within a 12-month period, up to $100,000. The following year, we get back our building aid ratio. Currently, 85%. So for a $100,000 project, it costs us $15,000. So very important to keep rolling that, right? The first year that you do it, and in this district, it's been done for many, many years. The first year is that first investment. The second year and thereafter, the investment is really $15,000 because you get your aid back the following year, okay? So the portion of the capital budget totals out to $6,784,000 and change, an increase of 4.29%. As we look down the line items here, biggest contributor to that increase of $272,79,000 is debt service. Debt service is on schedule. We have a schedule for all of our debt. We run that schedule out for 15 years. We know what our costs are. And we know what our costs will increase as we bring on a new debt. So again, I'm going to give an example. We talk about budgets, our buses, I'm sorry. The cost of our buses become part of our debt service and get recorded here. When we keep replacement schedules and we maintain them consistently and with integrity, we should bring on debt and lose debt. So buses, we use a five-year schedule. We maintain them for seven. But we bond for them for five. So we will have, right? So on the sixth year, we lose a payment, we bring a payment on. Each year, we lose a payment, we bring a payment on. So it keeps our bus fleet up to date, keeps our schedule current. When we start to vary from that, there could be ripple effects over, you know, over years. Because as we're not, if we're not keeping those buses on that type of replacement schedule, we need to start another one. And when we start extending out past that seven years, what do you think happens to the vehicle? Our repair costs go up, right? So you have to start weighing, where is it most appropriate? And where's the best place for our resources to be? We then move into the administrative budget and the last of the three components. This is all of our pieces of the district. Board of Education, central administration, finance, auditing, legal, BOSI's, admin, curriculum development, and support, tax collection, personnel services, HR, supervision of our schools and support of the supervision of our schools, and all related employee benefits and salaries. 4.1 million, or an increase of 5.3%. As we walk down through this, we'll jump right down to the line item. As we said, we're bringing on to assist in the model in the Robert Sture complex, an assistant principal. So that certainly is an increase in this section of the budget because that is all of the supervision. All of our supervision is included in the administrative portion of the budget, okay? Again, you can read down the line items. I don't need to read them to you. All employee benefits, all salaries within these categories for an increased budget to budget or year-to-year of $210,000. So I'd like to take a minute and just kind of dive into and talk through what that means. Because I think that's important. When we hear numbers sometimes, and these are big numbers, what does that mean, right? $1.4 million, that's a lot of money. What does that mean? And what are we doing differently? And how did we get there? So again, now we're going to jump over. We're not talking about the components. We're talking about specific categories, right? So if we read the chart from left to right and we look at the different categories, our biggest increase in our budget is in the salary and benefit line item. Again, I started off by saying, we are a service industry. We don't build widgets. Personnel is our business, right? We have personnel to support student services. So our biggest line item increase out of that 1.5, let's say, is salary and benefit. Or in other words, 68% of the increase is supporting salary. Equipment, we have about a 2.3% of that 1.5 million is the increase in equipment. Contractual, we've got about a $211,000 increase out of the 1.5 materials and supplies. We have a small decrease. Again, when I had said earlier, we made some shifts. Some of that money moved up into contractual, which is part of some of our curriculum purchasing. So we can drive revenue back on it. And then our debt, up $201,000, as we had seen on the previous slide. And then our transfer to other funds, as I talked about, supporting our early learning program, which is pre-K, and supporting some of our food service program. So again, I thought that this was important. It's important for me because when I get to the bottom line of building all of this information, I need to rationalize it in my head to say, okay, here's our increase. What is it? Where did it go? What does it support? So I hope that this is helpful, helpful for me to see it in this manner. And then again, just not to be confused, that very last column, that percentage there is the percentage of each of these line items of the increase, okay? So that's expenses, right? One piece of the big plan is the expense budget. Who gets to vote on the expense budget? So when you're 18, you're a voter. You get to vote on the expenses. So we'll jump over to revenue because what we do need to do is we need to balance our budget. We need to have the resources to meet the expenses, right? Just like at home, you can't go out and buy pizza if we don't have cash or debit card with cash on. So we have to have corresponding revenue. State aid being our largest portion of our revenue that supports our budget. Again, as Sean had said, we didn't receive the final state numbers until the end of last week. Might have been Thursday or Friday. This budget was approved on April 16th because there's a series of things that need to happen before May 20th. So we have an anticipated 2.7% increase in state aid. Again, this number is driven by the New York State budget. And the way that we use reimbursable expenses. So as I was saying, some of those things, if we spend money in this way, we get funds back. So we will always look at trying to do that if it can increase our state aid. Second-largest portion of our budget is taxes. Our taxes are looking at a 3.25% increase on the levy. That's not the same as the tax rate. We'll explore that in a minute. It is impacted by the tax cap calculation, which is also known as the tax cap or the tax levy limit, multiple names for it. Canastoda has the legal authority to increase the levy by 4.8% without going to override. 3.25 was what finance, as we've gone through this process, felt was reasonable and allowed us to continue to meet the obligations and the goals and the initiatives that have been put in place, okay? Other revenue, we do have some other revenue sources. Miscellaneous revenue, we have interest revenue of about $200,000. We have some revenues that come into the district because we're a self-funded insurance plan. And we also have some different types of rebates and/or insurance claims. So up about $90,000 would our projection is. Those three items didn't balance our budget. So we have some other items that we utilize to balance our budget. Unbalanced, and we're using some reserves. So when we talk about this, again, I'm going to go back to what I started in the beginning. When we look at budgeting for expenses, we need to look at all of our budgets, our expense budget, our revenue budget, and our reserve budget. Our reserves, for lack of a better term, are our savings, okay? There are legally 14, maybe 15, reserves by the state comptroller's office that a school district can have. We have some reserves that can be used to offset annual expenses. So we have an ERS reserve and a TRS reserve. Part of our reserve plan that we review annually and update is to use that money annually with the expectation, if there is money at the end of the year left over, we will replenish it so that it's available again if we need it. And then appropriated fund balance. This is our undesignated money. This is our money that we have available and can appropriate to a budget if necessary. Canastoda, here, we appropriate money. We can never have more than 4% of undesigned. So there's different types of fund balance, right? So undesigned, the state says you have no restrictions. It's kind of your little savings account over here. If you have an issue that comes up, you can go and you can use that money if you need to. But you can never have more than 4% of next year's budget, okay? So they put a cap on it. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter what you have going on, but don't have more than 4%. We don't. We have 4%. And then we have funds that are available for appropriated fund balance. So there is a slight increase in the amount that we're using for '25, '26 budget of about 1.75%. That balances out our revenue. So there's our revenue pieces to cover our anticipated expenses. So just to recap, right? Our budget-to-budget change, 3.93%. We talked, I think, in detail of what those increases look like and what they were representative of. Tax levy, 3.25% increase from last year, or $441,235. I do like to take a minute. We're not going to get real in-depth here. We can have an entire meeting or presentation on this very topic. But I do think that it is relevant to ensure people understand that the tax levy is not the same as the tax rate. So the levy is the pool of money that we need to collect, right? So we looked at that as part of our revenue. We get to increase it up to the tax cap if that is part of the budgeting process. The levy is increasing by 3.25%, could increase by 4.8%. We're not going to the levy. The tax rate is a factor of three pieces of information. So the school district, when we go and we calculate out the tax rate, which happens in August, the piece of information that we provide to the calculation is the levy, okay? The remaining pieces of information are provided to us. So we obtain our valuations from the assessors. So all of the valuations of all of the property in the municipalities that are part of the school district vouchers. We need that number. I can't speculate what a tax rate is because I need that number. That number goes up, right? The distribution is different. If that number goes down, the distribution is different. And then New York State gives us equalization rates. So the state gives us equalization rates. The assessors from the municipalities within our district give us the valuation rates. And then it is put into the calculation, and we come up with a tax rate. Does that make sense? I have one piece of a three-part calculation, okay? Lastly, we're almost done, I promise you. Want to take a minute and talk about the propositions and what is going to be on the ballots if you're coming out to the polls next Tuesday? The first proposition will be approval of the appropriation budget or the expense budget, which we just reviewed tonight, at $30,632,455. There will be a second proposition on the ballot, which is a little bit different and something that is historically on a ballot for a vote. The items that are in red or maroon, they kind of all look black looking this way, these are my talking points that are not going to be on the ballot, okay? In essence, there will be an authorization to increase the capital approval, the capital authorization for the project that we're in right now from $30,000,000 to $31,227,000. Why? Couple reasons why. We got very late SED approval. We were out at SED in December. Should have taken 12 to 14 weeks to get approval. We didn't get approval from SED until days before, five days, because we had a five-day legal notice that we needed to put out. Five days before we went out and bid in April, which is just not a very good time to bid in a school district climate, okay? So late approval from SED. A lot of things happening out there in the economy. A lot of things happening out there in the world that, you know, may be causing some uncertainties and unknowns as folks are trying to put a bid together to say what it would cost to provide this service for them, not knowing what things are going to look like. So that certainly played a factor. Tariffs, the landscape, on, off, played a factor. And our bids came in high. Out of line, bids came in high. So we came back to the table and said, all right. We kind of had some indicators, but we didn't have bids. So we didn't know what that was going to look like. Sitting with legal, sitting with our attorneys, sitting with our construction management team, calling out to SED, talking this through. Do we have any options? Do we have any opportunities to get the intended work done that was in the original scope when we're older, right? So the voters get to approve a capital project and tell us the amount of money. Once that amount of money is there, we can't spend another dollar. $30,000. Our bids came in at $31,200,000. So there is an opportunity for us to move money out of our debt service reserve. Debt service is a mandatory reserve that we must have on the books. It does have funds in it, and it can be used for two purposes. It can be used to offset debt, or it can be used for a one-time project. So through collaboration with, again, legal and comptroller's office and SED, our option as a school district is to put up a proposition and ask the voters to increase the authorization. So if we got approval to increase the authorization, we would maintain the current scope that we expected to maintain, and we would move the money from debt service to pay for the increase. So that means there would be no increase. This doesn't impact taxes. There's no increase to taxes. We're taking the money from this debt savings account and moving it over now to pay for the additional authorization in capital, okay? So again, not common. And that is something that will be on the ballot as proposition number two. Proposition number three, very common. We have this practically every year that I've been doing this in this district and not in this district. Approve the authorization to purchase and finance tradition- to purchase and finance traditional gas buses. So the proposition goes up for $590,000, meaning that we have the authority as a school district to finance for $590,000, purchase the buses, and then we drive aid on that over the next five years. 90% is our aid ratio, so the annual local share of buses is $11,800 as we go forward if we have approval on the last proposition.
Have you tried asking nicely?
Did it turn on?
He's Siri. Turn the page. You have the rest of us memorized. Is the computer behind it?
Or my better. One hand over. One back. One forward. Okay.
There you go.
Again, what you will see on the ballot is we have three board seats open, there are four people running for the board, their names are listed there, three board seats. So voters will vote for three of the four folks that are listed up there. Click me over. And then lastly, very important, the vote location has changed. Okay? So as we started early, and we've touched upon multiple times, our project is underway, and there are pieces of our facility that is being taken offline. So voting this year will be in the tunnel, right? We'll continue to push that information out, it will be, you know, plastered everywhere that we can plaster that, but please take that home and make sure that you talk to people, voting will be in the tunnel this year, one to eight. And we do have access to voting machines. We didn't last year because Madison had held the voting machines due to the election. So we do have voting machines this year, and again, one to eight in the high school tunnel will be the location that we're voting this year. Okay? The last thing that I just want to point out, as we've gone through this presentation, all of the artwork that is in here is from our 12th grade students. So we obtained artwork from our art teachers to embed into the presentation. Any questions?
I'll open the floor because this is part of the budget hearing tonight. If there's any comments or questions for the board, or Ms. Monroe, or Mr. Rosetta regarding the budget seating, now's your chance, we'll have another public comment period for the board, but anything else? You got up here? Okay. All right. Moving on to routine matters. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following routine matters: the minutes for the April 16, 2025 meeting, CSE recommendations listed here in your packet, as well as the treasuries report dated March of 2025. Do I have a motion?
Is that moved?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is presentations. I have first our innovative programs with Ms. Garofalo.
This is Garofalo and Kara Kitchen. The hope here was to give you an update on, there's a lot of things that we've talked about over the course of the year, so we thought it would be nice to hear from some of the students where possible, what they've been up to, and what these programs look like, and how the students have been impacted. So thank you for doing this.
We're presenting on the Center for Innovative Learning Partnership Programs. So I'm here with a bunch of other students, and we're going to talk about all of these different programs that we're doing with the Ms. G and many other advisors. To start, we have Greater Lakes Ambulance Service. So our partnership with Glass has about 13 active junior members right now. So what that means is, starting at 14 years old, you can join Glass and you start training, get all your mandatory training done that involves CPR, HIPAA, bloodborne pathogens, and then you go and you learn where stuff is on the ambulance, how to operate the heart monitor, the stretcher, and some skills. And then when you're 16, you can ride the ambulance and respond on emergency calls, and assist the EMTs, and paramedics, and a bunch of stuff. When you're 17, you can go on to become an EMT if you want, that's what I do, and then you can actually be the one independently, like, caring for patients in the back of the ambulance.
And Kara's the student leader for the group right now, and she helps to keep track which students are volunteering. Can you go to the next slide? Yeah, over 624 volunteer hours since June of last year. A lot, most of them were Carol, but all together. A lot of volunteer hours. Chamber of Commerce?
So this year, we have taken, we've created bylaws and a constitution. We've, at the beginning, elected officers. Elena Chucci as our president, myself, Ellen Stupin, Kara Kitchen as the vice presidents, Breland as reporter, and Ivory as secretary. And we have established committees. We volunteer for the holiday group of lights. We recently today have gone to the bench day dedication for Jim Caldwell. And while we were there, we also took a tour of the fire department in Village Hall. And we also participated in the alumni day and the business expo. And we are currently doing an unperishable food drive for community cupboards. And we also attended a bunch of meetings with Greater Canastota Chamber of Commerce.
What type of skills do you think you've learned by being part of the group?
How to, like, definitely volunteering your community more, and like, how the community works. Okay, so I've also led the municipal government program. We have taken a field trip to the village court, and we got a tour, and we were also in to sit and, where they had all their...
The court case is...
Yeah, the court case. And we also had a presentation about voluntary procedure. And Jeremy Lyon, the Village of Canastota administrator, was a guest speaker for us. And we also learned about career in government. And we also attended Jim Caldwell bench dedication, it was kind of a multiple group effort. And we also did the tour of the fire department in Village Hall.
Next week, we have two lawyers and a student who's going into public government, coming in to talk to the kids about their pathway into the legal field. Thank you.
So this is a program I'm currently, we're currently attending. We will add the International Boxing Hall of Fame at the beginning of June. This program was great. We learned a lot of skills from public speaking to gift shops, so selling. We also learned about the history of the Boxing Hall of Fame, and also about the history of boxers, and a couple of boxers that made great the name of Canastota. During the Boxing Hall of Fame, we will meet the inductees. For example, we will meet Pippi Paz, but also other celebrities like Sidney Sweeney. And we will work side by side with the other volunteers of the Boxing Hall of Fame. So I think personally, it's a great opportunity to network and build connections at an international level, because a lot of people are attending this international event.
Chloe, do you want to talk about the staple badges on the left? Those are the lessons.
The badges are...
Those different topics on the left side, those are the badges you burn. Do you want to bring those up?
Things like the speaking mentality are really useful with working and...
They did, they, most of the kids have earned multiple badges so far. We do a lot of repeat lessons, some of the lessons, they meet Wednesday during, or Tuesday during, after school, Wednesday during advisory, so they're getting an hour, it's just not a consistent hour. But we've done, we're starting to do some makeup lessons for the kids. But they've learned the ins and outs of the Boxing Hall of Fame, how it started, how it runs. And next week, they're going to have a field trip over to the Boxing Hall of Fame to learn their duties firsthand, and then over to Turning Stone Event Center to see where they'll be working during the Boxing Hall of Fame weekend.
So the Rosenmoin-Gifford Zoo partnership is a partnership with the Rosenmoin-Gifford Zoo, and we're going to be doing a big field trip at the end of the year for the second graders. We're going to be taking them to the zoo and kind of explaining, like, what's so important about zoos, why do we have them, how do the animals benefit from having zoos? We go on lots of video calls with zoo personnel, and we talk about different career paths that you can take in the zoo, like, like, working as like a vet, or business planning, or like, event planning at the zoo.
Right now, we're in the process of planning a field trip with the second graders, and we're actually creating badges that we just made, and we're very excited to do that. Yeah, we actually just got done filming a reading project for second graders, and yeah, we got to read books and film ourselves reading books to give them. And, yeah, and then we're going to do an in-person trip, and we'll be guiding the second graders while we're at the zoo, so I'm very excited for that.
Yeah, we're trying to get them, like, excited to learn about the zoo, and like, the different things that the zoo offers, career-wise, and also the different animals there.
I think it was nice that the girls actually designed the micro credential themselves. So we're going, each student that attends, each second grader, will get a button with their design on it. Sounds pretty cool. Thank you.
So once again, this was a program in collaboration with the Boxing Hall of Fame. It was at the beginning of the year, and we learned step by step how does the business of the Boxing Hall of Fame works. We did four rounds of entrepreneur lessons. We explained, as I said, how the entrepreneurship part of the business, entrepreneurship part of the Boxing Hall of Fame works, and the Boxing Hall of Fame people explain us how they took an idea to reality.
So unfortunately, our student couldn't make it tonight, so you guys get stuck with me and Snut. So I just wanted to say thank you to the people who helped bring this to life before I got started on our piece. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Rosetta and Mr. Schultz for actually believing in something like this, and actually having the ability to back it up. And thank you to Mrs. Garofalo and Otis Jennings for being able to get it off the ground with me to get to where it is today. So Connect Four has really taken off to the point of a lot of success stories coming out of it. We had multiple students actually get honored with the jump shot award for the high school in this last marking period. For those of you who aren't familiar, that means they raised their grade by a certain amount of points through this program. Being able to work with students who are on Honor Society and have been able to volunteer through this, to be able to work one-on-one in certain capacities to be able to boost their grades is something that's really exciting. We have also worked with Mrs. Carnahan, I don't see her tonight, but we have actually brought it over to Peterborough as well with multiple students. So we have high school students now working with Peterborough students. That's more of a social capacity, being able to build those friendships and have positive interactions with other students. That's been really exciting. The biggest success that we had from that is we actually had one student who was working with the mentor there, which is Amira, and they were having so much fun that they were like, can I bring some friends to this? So being able to have now a group of three to five on those Thursdays where we go over there. And also thank you to Mrs. Boudio for working with us on that scheduling, to be able to have Amira be able to do that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody got their dues, and I look forward to seeing it take off.
Both of the students who are in the Madison County Sheriff's Department program are at Track Meet tonight. They're both eighth graders, Isaac Melton and Cooper Calvin, and they've been doing some training in Lompsville. They have had some public speaking lessons, radio communication, they're assisting at the bike rodeo. They're supposed to get uniforms pretty soon, so, but they're doing well. I took it with our resource officers, they kind of spearheaded it, and the kids are doing good. It's just another good opportunity for our kids going into that kind of field.
All right, hello everyone. My name is Carter Crosby, and I wanted to highlight some things that we have done with Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. As a group, we wanted to focus on the elementary students in our community in a way to give back. In November, we participated in a million books giveaway, where we went to all the elementary rooms to read stories to each classroom. We then handed each student their own personal book. In due good December, we made encouraging cards for the elementary students with candy canes attached. Each student got an encouraging message from us. Potentially in a few weeks, we are planning a lunch with the elementary students, where we will have coupons for ice cream for them. Call it Mentor with Ice Cream. Some of the best things during the Leadership Academy is seeing the impact of excitement on each student's face.
How many veterans are there in there?
About like 15.
Esports originally started last year, and it was really late into the season, we didn't really have an opportunity to do anything with that, but it still brought together the community last year. And lastly, we had our seniors leave, which had really started to bring that art part into our, like, esports, which they ended up leaving, so that kind of sucked. This year, we started, and we started beginning, we originally started in the fall season like a normal sport would, and we competed. We ended up placing second for Rocket League. I was not there in the winter because I was at a volleyball tournament, but overall, throughout the entire experience, there was a lot of community being made, and there's a lot of practice being put in, communications, which really worked on teamwork, and overall, people were able to meet people who had same similarities as them and get new friends. Now, to win...
So that kind of sucked. This year, we started and we started getting, we originally started in the fall season like a normal sport would and we competed. We ended up placing second for Rocket League. I was not there in the winter because I was at a volleyball tournament. But overall, throughout the entire experience, there was a lot of community being made and there's a lot of practice being put in communications, which really worked on teamwork and overall people were able to meet people who had same similarities as them and get new friends. Now, to win the Rocket League tournament that we participated in, it took a lot of , in sessions that we did, it was two-hour sessions about, of putting in work and playing against other teams. And it was at the same time sportsmanship, being nice to the team, not doing anything that you really weren't supposed to, just like a normal sport. And then we communicated with each other and we all practiced and learned new skills. We had a coach and he helped us just like a normal sport would. And it really should be included and expanded upon and should really be more advertised to students because I think it's a great opportunity.
Another question.
Quick question for you. How would you compare your time in the fall and spring with your, the esports team with your time in the winter with volleyball?
So originally, in the fall, I was there almost every day. And then as the winter came in, I had to pick and choose. And so I think a better understanding would be you could choose to go for a game for volleyball or a tournament for volleyball like I did compared to the practice. So it's kind of your choice, but really it's got to be what do you want to push? What do you want to pursue? Because there's colleges and stuff for esports just like the sports. So it's a great opportunity to wait, but it's up to you to choose.
Yes. And what was your experience like doing the volleyball compared to your time on the esports game? That's what I, that's what I was looking for.
I think I had more of a connection with players and community playing esports. And I think it was better overall. But volleyball is something that I enjoy more and it is something that's physically active. And so that's why I did end up choosing that.
Well, thank you.
Closing, I just want to say how proud I am of each and every one of the students. Thank you all for coming. But each group has represented our school district in such a wonderful way. Today, when they were at the Chamber of Commerce dedication, they all, we had thirteen students go, they all wore their shirts. They were noticed. I had received a lot of compliments and a lot of comments after the, I even had text messages. I just saw all of you walking, but just, just their presence. I don't know if the kids realize that they are making an impression, so I'm very proud of them and thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thanks everybody. Thank you guys, students. I know you guys are nervous about coming up here and speaking, so you all did, did well. I know we're not the easiest group to speak to, but appreciate you guys coming in and liking, seeing all the opportunities out there. Next up for presentations, I have director reports.
Thank you though to the students that presented tonight. In a position such as mine, the Director of Instructional Support Services, I don't oftentimes get to hear about all the good things that the students are doing. We do a lot of the things behind the scenes and have lately spent a lot of time in elementary buildings, so not so much in the high school, where I spent all of my career previously. So it's really great to hear about all the nice, nice things that we're doing. So in my position, I do a little bit of a lot of things throughout the district, right? So one of the really big things that I have been doing, basically these last several days, is state testing. So you could take one and pass that along. That's just something for you to reference. It has our updated participation numbers for ELA and math state testing in grades three through eight. We're actually probably, pretty much holding our ground in terms of that participation rate. We're in the high eighties and nineties for the bulk of our grade levels, which is actually a really good participation rate because that helps with our ESA accountability down the road. And the graphic that they're all looking at right now actually shows the trend from last year to this year. So you can see the cohort as it's traveled from third grade to fourth grade this year or fourth graders to fifth graders. And you'll know there's a couple of grade levels where the participation rate, you follow the color, is exactly on the nose, right? We had the same amount of kids participating last year as this year throughout the cohorts. Had kind of, I don't know, some fluctuation in the number of students participating in ELA versus math and vice versa. The participation rates are not always dependent on refusals. Depending, you know, we also have kids that are absent for the test or medically excused or have moved out of district. For eighth grade, for instance, I think probably the biggest factor that affects us there is that we have a significant amount of our students taking the algebra regents for math. And then in science, which we just completed today in fifth grade and eighth grade, we also had thirteen students taking the biology regents down the road, right? So they don't take the eighth grade math and they take the eighth grade science. So kind of, you know, proportionally, as you're increasing the number of refusals in eighth grade, which kind of happens with the autonomy that teenagers kind of have just naturally, and the lower amount of students actually sitting for the test because of the population. I think that number in eighth grade naturally goes down. I know Mr. Blanchard kind of asked about that last year, like what happens in eighth grade? Wasn't it you within like math? Like it just, I don't know. I think...
I asked a lot of questions.
So, you know, we've had a successful testing season, positive feedback from the teachers. We've had some minor bumps and bruises through the process, but thankfully, not sure what sun was shining on us the day we sat down to take our tests, but we were able to log our students on, which many, many districts, if not most districts throughout the state were unable to do. But we didn't start the very first day, so I think that was helpful. We have a handful of kids still finishing up to take, you know, as, as absences and then we'll be, we'll be good to go. Another thing that I think a lot of people don't think about at this time is our students that are studying English as a second language are ENL students. They actually start their state assessments this week. It's the nicest slat test. It's the New York State, I wrote the acronym down, oh, English, right? English is a second language achievement test. So it's a really long acronym. We have our ENL teacher, Amelie Excel. She travels to Bosse, she travels to Oneida VVS and she's in-house administering that test. It's a three-day test. So the kids take session one, session two, session three, all on different days. And actually earlier on in the month, they had to do a speaking portion. So it's a very in-depth study of what they're learning. So state testing season just kind of winding down for us at three eight, but then turn around and we'll ramp it up for the high school students with the regents exams here shortly next month. So, you know, always looking for ways to make the process better, but I think we're in good shape. You know, we streamlined it and we've had some good, some good feedback. And then another little thing that I do that I'm looking forward to kind of coming up is and Mr. Rosetta and I will meet with our mentees this week for the last time this year, our new teacher group. And our mentors that are with those folks, we, we meet with them separately. That'll be next week. It's always a really great time spot. They, you know, we get a lot of feedback, we get a lot of ideas to help improve our program and, and improve our, our new teacher orientation each year. And I want to say special thank you to Katie New, actually, who came to us last year, first time in our district as a teacher. She started kind of an informal get-together each month with the new teachers and she's kept it going this year. So she's extending that invitation, excuse me, invitation out to the teachers of the new this year combined with the new teachers last year. And it's really serving to be a really good support group for, for them. So I really want to say thank you to her and looking forward to that. And, and we also need to replenish our mentor pool of teachers that will agree to be mentors for the next few years. So there's a training that goes along with it. So if you know any teachers, Mr. Krosak, that would be fantastic mentors, then, you know, by all means, apply. No? But that's really, I just, I don't want to take too much of your time, but yes, Mr. Blanchard.
First, I just want to say congratulations and thank you for seeing us through the testing season, watching my building's AAS facilitator do exactly that. It's just thankless work.
Kind of is. It's a lot of work for, but it's great to see the balance of, yep, we have state tests, we have state accountability measures, like that's one piece of school. But the, the presentations that the kids just gave us, that's really, you know, that is really why we do what we do, right? So...
For sure.
Super glad to see that.
I just want to make sure I'm looking at this chart right.
Sure.
I, maybe I'm showing my ignorance here, just being blind, but it's got enrollment marked, for example, grade, grade three, if you want to look on.
Sure.
There. Eighty-four enrollment, one refusal, but then this year ninety-nine for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So that's ninety-nine percent of our students.
Percentage?
Yes, I'm sorry that I did not put the percent there.
I'm just looking, I'm like, where are responding students from? That's, all right, I'm with you.
That, that would be the eighty-three out of eighty-four. So I'm sorry I didn't make that indication.
No worries. I probably could have gathered that if it wasn't seven tonight after a long day.
And the budget presentation.
Aging and invigorating, okay?
I met with all the percentages and the numbers and stuff.
We'll look away for a minute if you want.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. So in PPS, we have two more coaching sessions before we wrap up the school year. So we have Brandy Muziski, she works with the Central New York Partnership, Regional Partnership through ML Bosse's. So when you end up, you know, you, you have an audit or whatnot and the, you know, the state audits you and says, you know, you could do this better, they then put some type of agency in place to help with that. So we've been super lucky to have Brandy for last year and this year. She does coaching with our eight special ed teachers. So there are two coaching sessions left. Last year, it was once a month and this year, they are every other month. So we had a snow day situation, so hence why we have two left for the year. One is a makeup session, but they're one-on-one or sometimes two-on-one, dependent on the assignment of the, the teachers and the data that they're looking at. And they last about forty-five minutes. So we've gotten some great feedback from the teachers about it. And so we're really excited to wrap that up for the school year and then look at planning for next year. The Special Olympics for our Bosse's students will be on May twenty-seventh. VVS is hosting this year. I know that Canastora hosted for many years prior. However, due to an increase of medical needs, there is more than one program that's housed at VVS. And there was a lot of interest from other districts to kind of have a rotational schedule. So it's going to be at the VVS Middle High School on May twenty-seventh with a rain date of May twenty-eighth. And then, you know, annual season is coming to a close. We are wrapping up meetings for the year. And then, you know, I'm meeting with teachers, reviewing case loads, making sure that any programming needs that might have changed in the past couple of months, if they had an earlier meeting, we're making sure that everyone's ready to hit the ground running in September. Pretty much it for PPS.
Any questions?
All right, moving on to new business resolved. Upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six space, excuse me, pay schedule as per the attachment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Board of Education meeting calendar as per the attachment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby accept the agreement with King &amp; King Architect for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Capitol Outlet Project Scope of Services. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby approve the following policy updates. Policy eighty seventy-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby approve the agreement with Kristy Knowlton for musical services. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby approve the senior class trip, which will be June fifth and sixth, twenty twenty-five at Six Flags in Lake George. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seniors, enjoy yourselves, behave. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the September schools, the board does hereby accept the Madison County Public Health Contract for Related Services Preschool Program effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Student Board Member Update. Ms. Kitchen.
Not too much happened within the past month. I mean, we had spring break. Before spring break, we had pep rally. That was really great, last pep rally of the year. All the seniors got to give like their final announcement as to where they were going to college or if they were going in the workforce. Also had tenth grade fundraiser that day where the graders or whoever won like their raffle, that's the pie teacher in the face. Other than that, the art show's coming up next week, May twentieth, as well as the science expo. So it's going to be some great things from students there.
Kara, who are the lucky recipients of the pie in the face?
There was a lot of people, Mrs. Golchewski, Mr. Bedwire, Ms. Martino, Mr. Grasso, a lot more.
All right, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. First up, academic.
So we met, actually, Ms. Baroflo already did her presentation. That's basically what our meeting was about, meeting with her to learn about the different programs that being offered. So I don't really have much more to add. Our next meeting is on May twenty-eighth at five thirty.
Facilities. Facilities has not met officially, but obviously lots of stuff starting to take place as you go along the school, some black curtains, things are going up, work's being done behind the scenes now. So excited to get that rolling. There'll be more updates as we, as we start to move along, but we're just starting to lay the groundwork to get things off the ground with contractors and stuff on site. So apologies for any inconveniences, but a lot of big spaces being changed, turned over. So good things starting to move, so excited about that. Policy.
We met today, full committee with Tracy and Sean. We reviewed a number of policies regarding our student board member policy. Some discussion over the phrasing of it. We talked about doing up to two members, just to not lock ourselves in depending on the situation. There are some changes to medical policies that we reviewed regarding student medication and adipolaxis and immunization to take into account feedback from district nurses, replacing an old medical policy with the new adipolaxis policy. We reviewed updates or an updated policy for special education CSC procedures to replace an old one, which is just verbiage mainly recommended by legal. An updated policy governing how we ensure that homeless students are protected and afforded the same services that other children receive. And we reviewed a new policy governing how we manage extreme heat conditions as well as some possible verbiage we might be using for a new field trip policy. So stuff coming down the pipe.
Thank you. Safety.
Safety has not met since our last meeting and our next meeting is June twelfth.
Finance. Anything else to add after our presentation?
Riveting presentation for half hour.
Trying to help, let's see, novel back in, I don't know, but go ahead.
I think the only highlight is that as we, as Tracy talked about, the tax cap for this year is a three point two five percent. We were putting up, we understand that we are in very trying financial times, knowing that we could have gone up to four point eight percent. We wanted to make sure we, we weren't burdening the, our constituents any more than we really felt we had to to still make a reasonable budget to pay our expenses without also killing our fund balance. So there was a lot of consideration taking into how we built this budget, knowing everybody's finances are being stretched, but also paying for the things we have to do without getting rid of any programs and keeping what we have currently. So just stress that, that that was a, a big thought to this budget was... So, um, just stress that, that that was a, a big thought to this budget was everybody's financial situations currently.
Hey. Did I miss anything? I think that's all of them correct. Thank you, Emma. Okay, moving on to board comment period. Everybody have anything this evening?
I do.
Okay.
I have something written for today. Folks, if you, can everyone hear me okay over in the back row? Perfect, perfect. So folks, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. This was a time where teachers may receive flowers or candy or a kind note from a student or a parent. Many of us on the board have family members who are teachers or educators themselves. I can speak for myself as someone who grew up with two teachers, one being one of the best of Canastota, along with two sisters and many friends who are teachers. I think it's important to note that Teacher Appreciation Week should be more about bagels and cream cheese in the teacher's lounge from administration. It should be about support and action and true appreciation. Support for teachers and staff means upholding an environment where teachers and student safety isn't at risk. Support for teachers means having instructional specialists who guide and lead classes to model various instructional methods. Support for teachers and staff means upholding an environment where bullying of teachers should never be permitted. Support for teachers and staff means providing thoughtful and intentional professional development that will enhance their work with students. Support for teachers and staff is having administrators who will do the right thing, even when it's hard or more time-consuming. And for that leadership to set examples for the teachers to be supported to do the right thing. Support for teachers and staff is ensuring students are receiving the best education possible and providing the tools and resources for this to occur. Support for teachers and staff is establishing an environment where there is care, respect, and appreciation for our team who work tirelessly for our students. We often forget that teachers are human too, and sometimes they aren't perfect, nor are any of us. But for the teachers who work tirelessly to support our students, to help them grow in their thinking and their mindset, and who provide life lessons inside and outside the classroom, I thank you. And since my favorite teacher can't be here tonight, I wanted to share some quotes from students, parents, and teachers that I've received over the past few days. A current seventh grader wrote, "This year I felt more confident than I ever have before on the state test, and it is because of your teaching." A student who had him last year said, "I realize you didn't just teach me grammar rules and spelling, but you prepared me for the road ahead," high school. A ninth grader told me, "The first paper I handed into him, he wrote in red ink, 'Do this over.'" I was so upset, but two years later, looking back on that, I realized that he taught me how to write and how to think about my work. I'm a much better student now because of this teacher. As the daughter to someone who's taught for over fifty years, many folks stop and ask me about him. Over the years, I've been part of countless conversations similar to, "I really struggled with your dad when I had him. He was so hard, and I had to do so much work, but then I went to college, and I realized that he prepared me more than any other teacher, and that he was better than most of my professors. I wasn't able to appreciate him when I had him. Can you thank him for me? He really was the best." And lastly, a fellow teacher shared with me last week, "He is the reason I write as well as I do today. He's never let me give up on being the absolute best I could be. He pushed me as my parents did, and I knew it was because he loved all of us as he did my own kids, his own kids. I am the writer and thinker I am today because he believed in me and my abilities a lot more than I believed in myself." So again, teachers and staff, I appreciate you, I thank you for what you do, and a special thanks to the teachers in my life and all of our lives who've shown us time and time again the importance of education, the undeniable value of our teachers, and the importance of standing up for what is right, even when it isn't easy. Thank you.
Well said. Anything else? No. Okay. Moving on to superintendent's reports.
All right, well, to clarify, I think when people were talking about the entertainment value of the budget presentation, the boring part was my part, the entertaining part was Tracy's, so we'll get that out of there. I said a couple of things, just, Capital Project is gonna continue to be now just constant information coming out regarding the Capital Project, so ask people to, uh, if there's something that seems out of, out of place, out of whack, we'd prefer to, you know, let us know, uh, because there are a lot of moving pieces. Certainly Nick Campell and his team are, are, are very busy. We have, uh, a lot of new people who are gonna be on our campus for the next couple of years and in different waves and shifts, so, uh, but exciting time, but, um, a lot of, in a chaotic time of the year, it's gonna be especially hectic, uh, now that the work is actually, uh, beginning on campus, so look forward to that, though. Wanna make sure that we continue to give the invitation to participate in our strategic planning process, which is again next, um, Thursday, next session is next Thursday, the twenty-second, uh, right here in the, uh, in the library. Actually, it's, it's, the start time is six or six-thirty, and I think, I think it's in our, you clarify that, please? We've had both times, so.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty is time. Pack meetings, we continue to have pack meetings. We've had, uh, more, uh, people, some new, uh, people hadn't been in our meetings before the last couple of times, so nice to welcome new people. There's always room for more people to, uh, attend and, and be a part of something that's positive and about trying to make the school the best it could be. Uh, we have our next meeting this Thursday, and that'll also be, uh, right here in this room, and that's at five o'clock. We have, uh, a new feature that we've, in our attempts to try to get more information out, um, in different ways, we know that people, um, sometimes like to listen to things if they're, whether they're driving or, uh, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's hard to always read everything. It's, it's, it's nice to be able to listen or hear or what. Um, and so we've had a couple of, um, budget-related, uh, short video, or, I'm sorry, audio clips, um, that Tracy and Brenda have been working on. I think those clips answer a lot of real basic information questions that people might have, that there's gonna continue, there's gonna be a couple more, uh, episodes leading up to the vote. Um, there'll also be some episodes related to the, things like the Capital Project. Or as we get further into the strategic plan, for example, we'll be sharing pieces of information that might be helpful, or updates on, um, different things. Some, I think, are gonna become video as well, some things are more suited, uh, and work better in, in video form. And the goal is to keep creating this, you know, sort of library or archive of informational tools that will explain things that people are interested in. And so instead of necessarily having to talk to us or ask, uh, you have to talk to a specific person, uh, they can hear from different voices, different people who are involved with that, um, project or initiative or whatever it is, um, and get information. If it's the middle of the night or the weekend or whatever, they can still have access to that information, so. Look forward to feedback and reaction to that because we're interested in topics that people would like to hear about. So we know that budget and capital project are timely, but there may, if there are other things that people are interested in, then we'd be glad to try to, um, put some, some things together. And again, the intention is to have it coming from different voices depending on the topic, um, different, um, expert, you know, different layers of expertise or throughout the district. We heard a little bit about our esports team, just wanted to congratulate them since our last meeting. We actually had, I'm not an esports expert in the, uh, title, but it was the Rocket League, uh, we, we were first place. It's a big deal, especially because, uh, we had a nice showing in the fall. It was the first year that we're actually in competition, as was pointed out, and then even within the same year to come and win, um, was a big deal. So congratulations to those students and trying something new and, and sort of really making their team, uh, work well together, and it was just a nice way to end their, their season. Also some other congratulations to, uh, one of our juniors, Balen Mancini, was recognized, pretty big deal, and that, um, last week, Thursday night, um, there was a regional school boards institute, uh, recognition ceremony, so, you know, uh, school boards and, uh, teachers, administrators, large pool, uh, from the Oneida, Herkimer, Madison, three Bosse's region. And so I believe there were only five students from that entire region, so you're in the neighborhood of thirty-ish or so schools, and, um, Balen was one of those students, and so it was a nice, real nice, um, recognition and honor for, for her, so congratulations to her. There are a million, uh, end-of-year events. I do injustice to listing some of them because we're in the height of, of that, so I continue to ask people to refer to the website, refer to information that comes out on our, um, our, um, district website or Facebook because a lot of things change quickly. Certainly the sports season in the spring is incredibly changeable, so, uh, just to refer to that. But exciting time because kids are involved with so many, uh, great things, and I think to come from full circle with, you know, we talk about student activities and engagement and doing something meaningful. You saw some connection, I saw some, personally saw some connections today. Had the opportunity also to attend the, um, the bench, um, reveal for, uh, Jim, Mr. Uh, Jim Caldwell, who many of you know was just a, a real important member of this school community. I'll always be thankful to him because he was one of the first people I had a chance to, to meet when I came to Canastota and really worked with, and he was very involved, and in fact, some of the comments that were made today, uh, were about how important kids in the school and education. He was a former board member and, you know, so it meant a lot to him. It was pretty cool to see, uh, Kara and, I don't know, probably what a dozen, was a dozen or so, uh, other students who were part of our Junior Chamber of Commerce attending and right sort of in the front of that. So you could see, um, and recognizing, uh, Mr. Caldwell, you could see sort of the impact still continues with the students that were there and, and they're doing good things and things that would make him proud, I think, so. Just a nice, uh, nice event today, and I think it's important to say thank you to, to people like that who had, uh, done so much for the school.
All right. Moving on. Personal recommendations. All appointments are pending clearance on fingerprinting. First off, retirement and resignations. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Zachary Loyce's letter of resignation as a social studies teacher effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby accept Tracy Mamon's letter of retirement as a library media specialist effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to permanent appointments. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint Jeff Christensen on a probationary basis as a seven-twelve social studies teacher in the tenure area of social studies, with the understanding that the named individual does hold New York State certification appropriate to or required for that position. The probationary appointment shall commence on September first, twenty-twenty-five, and the probationary appointment shall expire on September first, twenty-twenty-nine, and that the named individual to be eligible for an appointment on tenure upon expiration of the probationary period, it shall be necessary, but not sufficient, that the individual has received an APPR rating as either effective or highly effective in three of the four years of probationary service, and has not received an annual professional performance rating of ineffective in the final year of probationary appointment, as based on ratings derived in compliance with Education Law Section three-zero-one-two-dash-D at step twelve, I'm sorry, step ten, bachelor's plus master's plus thirty hours at sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Substitute appointments. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the following substitutes. Heather Garrow as a substitute RPN school nurse at thirty-two dollars, twenty-five cents an hour, effective May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Tracy Mamon as a retired CTA substitute teacher at a hundred and forty-five dollars a day, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Civil service appointments. Elizabeth Watson, cleaner, probationary ends April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, permanent effective fifteen, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Ashley Blackburn, bus attendant and school monitor, probationary ends April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, a permanent effective April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Linda Emmons, a food service helper, probationary ends May second, twenty-twenty-five, permanent effective May twenty, May fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Brenda Ecclestone, instructional computer specialist, probationary ends May ninth, twenty-twenty-five, permanent effective May tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Why not, why not order? Can we do those all together?
This, I believe, I believe so.
Okay, it just wasn't, it wasn't in the agenda like it was for the, uh, the substitute appointments with like its own thing, so all the reason I was asking.
Okay. Do we, I think we can do those as. Yeah. I think, I think service.
I can make it like the substitute appointments if it looks easier.
Yeah. Okay. Other. Resolved, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the termination of Jeremy Hoffd Allen as the boys JV basketball coach effective January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby discontinue Erica Galavati's probationary appointment as a teacher's aide, school monitor, effective April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby revise the appointment of the science club advisor to co-advisors at five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars each for Sean Dwyer and Aaron Tucci. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Taylor Manor possesses a seven-twelve special education certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of special education effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Congratulations, Sarah. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Bonnie Barlow possesses a physical education certificate issued to the commissioner, issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of physical education effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. You waited around here, almost the last one on the agenda, you stuck around this whole time. Congratulations to Bonnie, by the way. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Justin Krosak possesses a seven-twelve social studies certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of social studies effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Cassandra Furness possesses a B-two special education certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of special education effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned upon compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Congratulations, Cassandra. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Deanna Torasano possesses a school social worker certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education, is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of school social worker, effective September first, twenty-twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Congratulations. Resolved, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Catherine Fowler possesses a B-six elementary certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of elementary effective September first, twenty twenty-five, conditioned upon compliance with the APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Catherine, congratulations. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Mary Laberty possesses a library media specialist certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure of library media specialist effective September first, twenty twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
The second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Congratulations.
Do you guys wanna check out books?
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Rachel DeGeorge possesses a school guidance council certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of school guidance counselor effective, effective September first, twenty twenty-five, conditioned upon the compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. She's not here, right? Okay. Congratulations, Rachel. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that Lindsay Bazan possesses a one-six elementary certificate issued by the Commissioner of Education is prospectively awarded tenure in the tenure area of elementary effective September first, twenty twenty-five, conditioned upon compliance with APPR requirements or waiver as determined by the state of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining, Lord.
One abstention, noted. Motion, although, I'm sorry, uh, motion carried. Congratulations, Lindsay. Moving on to coaching. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Ricky Rutherford as an unpaid modified softball coach for the twenty twenty-five spring season. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Christopher Nyhoff as the boys JV basketball coach with a stipend of one thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty cents prorated effective January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five through February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to our public comment period. Does anybody have anything to stress the board this evening? Once, twice, three times.
Might be you had something, right?
What? You are graduating all candidates for making tenure.
Yes, duly noted. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, future dates. We've got a bunch of them here. Um, May twentieth, we have a budget vote from one to eight, as noted in the high school tunnel this year. Know that that's a different location than it has been in the past. Um, also, on the twentieth, we have district-wide science and art expo from one to eight. So while you're here voting, be sure to walk the halls and check out the science and art expo. May twenty-second, again, the strategic planning meeting here in the high school media center at six-thirty. May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, no school, quickly approaching, hard to believe we're halfway through May. May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth are the Spanish eight speaking exams. June fifth, high school final chorus concert at seven PM. June, that's been changed. It's now the fourth. The, the fourth, okay.
Conflicted with the senior trip.
Okay, so correction, so June fourth will be the high school final chorus concert. Still at seven o'clock?
The band concert's on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
May twenty-ninth.
May twenty-ninth for the band concert. June tenth will be our next regular board meeting here at six-thirty. Um, and then June tenth, regis exams, no school for grades nine through twelve. I'd like to entertain a motion for, excuse me, for executive session to discuss employment history as well as matters leading to the employment of individuals, so I have a motion.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We are now in executive session. We will not be returning for any additional matters of action this evening. Thank you for coming up.